That study is based on six thousand people, I mean three thousand people getting this. Two hundred people's getting that, fifty people getting that. As far as the megabytes and gigabytes and I've seen the study, I'm sorry I don't have one with me, but I do have it. But if anybody wants a copy of that, you can let me know and I can get it to you.
Councilman Land, I must applaud you and Councilman Holm effort for pulling this together and getting it on the agenda and posted. Mayor Angelo once said, when people show you who they are, believe them.
That's true.
Those four councilmen shows us who they really are tonight, and we must believe them. And I talked to Mayor Frank George in Kirbyville. He said Charter Communication went into agreement with the city of Kirbyville for to rent their poles.
Pole attached.
For Charter Communication to hang their lines at ten dollars a pole.
We're doing the same thing here. We also we have a pole agreement with AT&T for sixteen something, sixteen and change per pole.
That's guaranteed revenue.
Yes.
Also, they were going and talking to Jasper Newton Electric Cooperative and tried to reach an agreement contract to rent their poles. And if there was a storm or somebody had an accident, turn the poles down, they would put their money in it and replace in the poles. Also Charter got grant money for this broadband network.
You know how much they got?
Plus fifteen million dollars, I believe.
Thirteen point nine.
Win the ball point.
Thirteen point nine million dollars.
And plus they're gonna use their own money. And if it was not for the citizens of Jasper paying their electric bills, there would be no fund from SRMP. This is our money.
Yes, ma'am.
And they're gonna waste one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars on a useless or worthless feasibility study when one was already done. That doesn't make sense. And turn around and spend another three hundred and forty.
Three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Twenty-five thousand dollars for the plan. And yet the city don't have that in their budget. If it was such a good idea, why the city didn't budget that? And turn around and go spend fifteen million dollars to bring a failing broadband in Tava City to try to compete with, you said eight, I thought it was five other companies. This money belonged to the citizens. And you can't even take an act of Congress, Mike, you know, to get an extension. Y'all know that, councilman. You can't get extension on your light bill. Look at this wasted money that could have helped people that's sick making a charge. Do I pay my light bill or do I buy my medicine? This city council have done that to our citizens. And we need to have a voice to speak. Did they really think about it? Did they think about their constituents? Yes, I witnessed it. A friend of mine told me, go by a certain location at twelve o'clock and look. I did, and guess who I saw going in?
Going in where?
Short Funeral Home.
Okay. You actually witnessed this?
I witnessed it. I witnessed. Sure did. And I mean, what's so secretive? What plan do they have to present to the people, to get to the people, get ten ties to people to switch over?
So in other words, you're saying that they're making decisions there and then bringing them us and then giving these decisions like this Evelyn just said.
Yeah.
You know, like they've been shoved down her throat.
Right. I mean, it may not, it may not be nothing going on, but it sure looks funny. It sure looks funny. And we definitely don't know quote, quote, pro in our city, in our local government.
There it can.
And the mayor answered me the last time I asked, any of you council members have any affiliation with this company? He said, hell no. But I'm laying the tail end to say, if that's beneath your position as mayor, to give a resounding answer, hell no.
To a citizen of the town.
But there's never a wrong time to do what's right. Never a wrong time to do what's right. Rethink this.
Thank you very much. Noel, you said you had something?
Most of, I'm not researching any of it, okay? But from several years that I've been listening, every municipality that has ever got into the broadband business, most of them have been fought, the state would try to shoot them down because AT&T and a lot of big companies have agreements with the state to not allow municipalities to offer broadband. And everyone that has done it, from Pennsylvania to California, they've been able to offer a much more robust broadband for a markedly less amount of money. Now, I don't know what is, what their price point might be and what their bandwidth availability is. I know I just got a deal from Sparklight, they're no longer offering one hundred megabit per second. I've got to go to two hundred. And it's a nominal fee increase and I don't mind paying it. But if I could get two hundred megabits per second for twenty-five, thirty dollars a month and save thirty dollars a month, then I could afford to pay my electric bill.
Well, that's absolute.
So there's, I'm just here to find, to listen, to understand. I mean, it wouldn't be the first time we've all been lied to in that you can all remember whenever our televisions were no longer any good. Because it wouldn't go to channel two no more.
Yeah.
Well, they moved all of that because they were coming up with this wifi for internet that would reach sixty miles away. And that's what all that was for, and yet we've yet to see that.
We haven't seen that yet.
Now, if that does come to fruition, then broadband in the city is gonna be pretty hard, you know, broadband for anybody. Because if I can offer the people in Danby broadband, they'll pay fifty dollars a month for it.
Absolutely.
Because they can't get it any other way. But if we can get terabyte, I know somebody up the north highway's got terabyte service. And they offer it to the people who stay at their facility. And if we can get, if we can offer terabyte service to a business, businesses will come like these, press the button and I fall and I can't get up.
Yeah.
Well, if they, if they have good broadband, reliable, then a lot of companies, that's one of the things they look for. Where do we want to move our people who aren't working in the office? Let's move them someplace where they've got good broadband and they can work at home. And so, you know, there's, there's a lot of different sides to this. It could, it could be a diamond and we just gotta look at the right facet. But, you know, what, what we need to do is to learn more about it.
Yeah, we definitely, and I agree with this other, kind of slow it down, you know? Yes.
I want to tell everybody, I did my own little census about two weeks ago. I called down there at Mount Bellevue. It's called MB Link, these same people, Kramer. The first one I called, man been there with a lumberyard for all his life. I said, I told him the scenario, what we were trying to do, how do you like your MB Link? Well, lady, let me tell you something. I didn't, I, they have not even come to me and asked me if I wanted on it. I've called him for two years, they get to return my phone call.
Wow.
I said, okay. I said, then I called a former's insurance agent. She says, ma'am, I'm happy with what I got. It was not cost effective, it was cheaper than what, and the erstman told me the same thing. I have two, they're fast, they do whatever I need to do down here. And I said, well, let me ask you something, girl. What is the deal? Why is everybody making this poster child at Mount Bellevue what Jasper's supposed to do? He says, ma'am, it ain't because of this fiber optic cable, it's because we have industry. And I'm not for all this industry, it's changing our whole dynamics.
Yeah.
It says our school, they're after our school, and it's the industry.
Because the infrastructure down there is a lot different than here in town.
Yeah, we don't have that here.
We don't have all these big businesses down here in town. What do we got? LP?
And then a tall school.
Now you got Provence, but what else do you have? What else do you have here? I mean, I can understand, you want to draw people here, but if you don't have all of that to service, you don't have all this industry here, and you don't have the infrastructure, why are you trying to do it?
Well, the former's lady, she was, and she told me, she said, I'm gonna tell you what. Just inspect your streets because everywhere that they've dug for that fiber optic, there's a hump there. And I said, oh my God, look at her streets in Jasper. They did all this stuff up and look what we've got. I mean, we can't, I mean, so is that gonna be another fifteen million?
Yeah.
To redo these streets because like, I just came down out there by Peachtree and I hit a hole that liked to knock the bottom out of my car. Every street looks like that. This green rock that they did, it's got all this stuff, this grass growing up in it, that's a joke. I mean, what do we do?
Thank you, yeah, you're right.
And it's ridiculous. We can't put syrup there to what was a hammer equipment up there several years ago because it was not cost effective. I've been in Raul Acres for forty-five years. It's not cost effective for me to have a sanitation truck. My truck comes out of Huntington. I have all the amenities and have, have a lift station, have electricity, have water.
Does it come from the city?
Yes. Been there forty-five years, I don't live in the city, but I have all the amenities, but I can't have a garbage truck because I can't, it's just not cost effective. So sixteen million dollars, how can that be cost effective? It's ridiculous.
I just have a couple questions. When they open up the RLP for this, for this contract, do they, do y'all have a thing of policy saying that they have to open a RLP for bids?
For the bids, they do have to submit the bids. They're closed bids and who was it? Jared Taylor is using our engineer from Delta Engineering. He's using a person that does ours.
So they do, they do open bids?
Yes, they do open the bids, yes.
Okay. So why y'all not holding the city council accountable? You know, you got election coming up soon and then you got people that you done voted in these for y'all, for y'all leaders. They having a meeting at the tree home. They not bringing out the information y'all need before you look up, everything will be on pass and they're gonna be, they're gonna be down here talking about it. You have to hold them accountable. You have to hold them accountable. If you don't hold them accountable, we wasting our time just sitting here and just talking. I see you and Brother Henry, y'all taking, y'all taking the lead. And anybody can see, this is a good old boy deal.
I had a friend of mine once tell me, not too long ago, a friend of mine told me, he said, you know what? And you know, it's like, and I'm like, you know, I was just kind of like, I just had to kind of hang my head. I says, like, I mean, because I'm a part of it, because I am a part of city hall, but I'm doing, I'm only one person. Councilman Holm is only one person. We can only do so much. And he told me, he said, I'm gonna tell you something. So you know what's wrong with city, with city hall, with city council? I kind of have an idea, but I'm pretty sure you're gonna tell me. He said, there's no leadership.
Exactly.
That you have no leadership at city hall because everybody wants to be, you have a fair, everybody wants to be the boss. We, we have a mayor, but do we really? We have other council members, they're there, but do they serve you? You, the public, not you, 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 but you, the public, the public here in Jasper. That's, that's what you vote us in for.
You have to, we have to hold them accountable.
If this was so great, why didn't they show up? If it was so great and they could sell it, why didn't they show up? And tell them how great this is.
Yeah, see, it's a good old boy system, man, why they come down here and explain that to you?
Somebody hand meeting somebody else's hand under the cake. Somebody getting some kickback behind this.
They have to hold them accountable. They will keep on pushing, they be doing it for girls and stuff. When you don't have leadership, you got weak leadership like you do in the world. It's gonna, you gonna be all waiting up in a little room like this here and talking about it. You have to hold those folks accountable.
Well, this is what I'm gonna say.
Hold them accountable.
Like I said, I can't apologize for them, I can apologize for me, but I can apologize for council for them not being there.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna say, and I'm gonna say this.
It's not your fault. You try.
But I'm gonna say this. They may have been able to run from this meeting, but there is a city council meeting on the fourteenth.
They won't answer our questions.
No.
But they'll hear your voice. They'll have to be there at that meeting.
They gotta be there.
They gonna be at that meeting. They, they gonna have, as a matter of fact, they don't have to be at those meetings either. But they gonna come to that one because they're taking photos. They take a picture. That's picture day. That's picture day for city council.
They need to answer our questions.
So you keep all your questions, what you have, and you can even say, request it, tell them, like I'd like to have a town meeting. A workshop. Whether they have it down at the welcome center at Jetco, have it here in, at city council, in the city council chambers. They can do that either place. You as a city, citizens, residents of Jasper, you can say, look, I need more information. Not that we gonna set up or like what Councilman Daniel said before, when he made his comments on Facebook or KJS comments in the opinion section, or well, we gonna set up a website. Does everybody in here have access to that? Well, you may not need broadband for that, but you know, you're gonna need that for that, but you know, does everybody, okay, they're gonna, well, we got, but everybody's not gonna be able to get into that system. Just, and so like, okay, yeah, how do I, I want to put my questions in. You're gonna put your questions in, they're gonna give you the answers. You're not gonna be able to look anybody in the face and have them to give you that answer.
Councilman Land.
You know, just like the things that's going on now with our, with our election system. Half the people that's going to the polls, how many of these mail-in ballots have been sent back because people didn't understand them? Because they just put it out there and said, okay, here, we're gonna mail this to you. So now, basically, that's sort of like the same thing. We gonna have, we gonna set up a website that's gonna be able to do Q and A, questions and answers.
Councilman Land, let me ask you and Councilman Holm to do something for me. I would like to see a copy of the city charter that says we had to get out of city hall.
I showed you a copy of the city charter, but I don't think that's gonna say that.
I'd like to see it. They said it was in there.
She said it was in there.
They said it was in there, that's why.
I'll tell you what, I have a copy of the city charter at my house tonight, I'm gonna look it up. Thank you, thank you Reverend Norsworth. I appreciate your comments, I appreciate you coming. Thank you very much. Continue to support us.
I do.
I really appreciate that, thank you.
There was one thing that I heard today also, that there was a small town that, that they got a bond to pay for their broadband. And they had to have like, I think it's sixty percent or something of people to sign up for it, for this bond. They had thirty people sign up for it.
I believe that was.
Thirty people because it was like a hundred and thirty-five dollars a month.
That's correct.
To, and it was strictly broadband, yeah, I mean, internet. That's not a bundle, you cannot bundle, there's no.
Yeah, there's no telephone, no television, telephone.
And what I also, now that was, I heard that today. But I also read before that in Mount Bellevue. This was seventy-five dollars a month for.
You have a deposit, seventy-five dollars, installation, seventy-five dollars.
With seventy-five a month.
And a monthly fee of seventy-five dollars, that's resident, that's not business.
Right.
That's what they put on internet, whether that's true or not, I don't know.
But I'm gonna tell you, it's a hundred and fifty bucks. I have, I have broadband, I have AT&T. I pay fifty dollars a month and I'm happy with it and I use my computer a lot.
Now, this was the, Noel, you might know, know a little bit more about this than me, but this is the proposal that was from Kramer. Kramer Services Group, okay? This was their proposal. Permit and design, hundred ninety-four thousand dollars. Project management, four hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars. Construction and labor, thirteen million, three hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Network, infrastructure and electronics, two million, five hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. Jasper fiber deployment, fifteen million, eight hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars and thirty-six cents. Now, what, also they said like the revenue, what they're saying, this is, and they're gonna do this, and just to be clear, they're not gonna just throw all this money at them at one time. Okay? This, this, this is the proposal from Kramer. They understand that there was saying the annual revenue projections, seven million, seven hundred and tw- uh, two thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred dollars. Annual operations costs, seven hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. Annual net revenue projection was three million, two, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. And they, ROI, return on investment in a year was supposed to be two million dollars. That's just, that's just not feasible for the city of Jasper. And this is the offer. So for those of you that can understand this, because I don't, but I just have to look at, they're offering one gigabyte. That's for the number of customers, for three thousand, one, for three thousand customers at a hundred and thirty-five dollars a month. Heavy equipment provided, monthly revenues on that, they're saying they gonna get four hundred and five thousand dollars. Three hundred megabytes for six hundred, per six hundred customers at ninety dollars a month. Fifteen dollars a month for heavy, for equipment recovery, so that's ninety plus the fifteen. And that's gonna be, they're saying we're gonna get a monthly revenue on that of sixty-three thousand dollars. And what were you saying, like the hundred? For a hundred, it's a, for, that's per three hundred and fifty customers. It would be seventy-five dollars for the cost of the customer and fifteen dollars for the equipment. So they're saying they get an annual revenue on that of thirty-one thousand, five hundred dollars. That's, that's for residential. They're looking at also for commercial. They give you amount of customers, commercial for one GBS, six hundred and forty customers, a hundred and thirty-five dollars a month. With the equipment provided, they're saying that they're getting a revenue off that, a monthly revenue. A monthly revenue of eighty-six thousand, four hundred dollars. Commercial with three hundred MBS, they're saying.
So you're gonna need people to, to let go of their current services.
Right, in order for this to work. This is not guaranteed. This is not guaranteed.
And those prices are comparable to like what I'm paying now. The difference is, city Jasper is not making eighty-six thousand dollars a month.
Right.
Out of.
Correct. They're not gonna be making that, that type of revenue.
And also, is there like a penalty if you go over the one gigabyte? Are they gonna cut you in it off? Are they gonna charge you extra?
Those are some valid questions.
Or kind of under table, under like.
Well, they could do it just like they do your phone. You go over, then it costs you a little bit more, but you can always add one. But you go over a gig, a gigabyte?
The fact that you're gonna need these people, all these people to leave their services to go to this in order to make those, those projections work. You're gonna need a vast of people to relinquish their current services to make those numbers work.
Right.
In the worst case scenario, if you don't get ninety percent of the people to switch, switch their services, what is our revenue projections?
Right. I don't understand it. And like I said, like Debbie was saying earlier, like the city of Dayton, they did have that. The city of Dayton is now in a position where they're looking for a, there's a company out of Houston, a company out of Houston. They're looking to sell their service too because they can't, they can't make any.
So what would they do with, like you said, the competitors like AT&T, New Wave, and Sparklight? Would they try to monopolize it where they can't come in and give a service or we are only have?
I don't think they'll be able to do that.
They can't do that.
They won't be able to do that.
They have the rights to frame, they have the right.
So you all have a choice as to what electric company you want to do with.
No, we don't.
Like your trash company now. Like you said, like, you bring up a valid point because guess what? Like, everybody is like, you have a business, you have a business, like a lot of the homes that they're building now. I was getting a lot of complaints from some of the contractors. One of the contractors came in and said, why do we have to use the city of Jasper's dumpsters? Because the city of Jasper don't allow anybody else to come in the city to do that.
So you're saying we'll be forced to use the dumpster?
You have no choice to do that.
We have no other option.
Well.
I don't see why.
There are options. Now, but what I did though, I did talk to one of the, I did come to city hall, I did talk to the city manager. I said, well, yeah, that's what we do, I said, but so what if it's not available? What if, I mean, I'm pretty sure they, they do try to make sure that they buy enough dumpsters so they can have them, so people won't go outside. But if they don't, they don't have a choice, they do have to let you. So you could say like, well, I went up to the sanitation department, they don't have a dumpster. I have a situation that's going on right now where I need, is I have construction going on in my house and I need this dumpster now. Can you provide me one? Well, no, we don't have one, but we can get you one in three weeks. No, I need one now. So you let them know, well, I'm going outside to get one. They have no choice, they can do that. I have, I have had that done.
So actually currently we have a competitive market for the most part for internet providers in the city, correct?
Correct.
There's a competitive market.
There is a competitive market.
Right. And most of the people in town have access to that. But, so we're, we're wanting to get into the market and compete with those other providers already, that we already have those providers. But in turn, we don't have other providers for city utilities for us to lights. That's where we need the relief.
That's it.
Uh, we need the relief with, we don't have an option to go to a cheaper provider.
Right.
We don't have an option to help us with our utilities. That's where the help need to be focused, not competing in the market where there's already a competitive market in place.
You look at the other side of it. I mean, my son, my, my son got hit with several thousand dollar electric bill because of the freeze last year. Because with that cheaper company, there were clauses in there that said, if demand, if the statewide demand or the area-wide demand exceeded a certain amount, your rates went through the roof.
I still want to focus on the services that are being provided to here at us.
Sir, okay.
And I would like to finish that point.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I respect you, sir. I would like to finish mine. Um, so with that being said, of course, a live storm did hit, that's, that's a natural disaster. During the same timeframe, we were hit with a hurricane, another natural, natural disaster. Cause people had to, had to evacuate and uncomfortable, cost a lot of money. In addition to that, we're still in ongoing pandemic in, at the same timeframe. So we're in the middle of three natural disasters. And the city had the ability to help lower our utility rates for a short period of time and didn't even consider the offer. Didn't even consider the motion that they put forth. So that's where the release, the relief is needed. We're not asking to switch utilities, we're not asking them to open up the market to have other competitors come in. Even if we keep the services that we have now, give us relief. You want to help us with something that's really not a demand at this point. There's, there's a competitive market in the broadband. There's not a competitive market with the utilities.
There's only other thing you have.
If you want to help us, don't help us where there's already competition. Help us over here where we locked in. We can't go anywhere, we can't do any better about the light bill. Like the gentleman said earlier, I have to witness too many people having to make a decision of paying their utilities or their medication. Senior citizens. But we're gonna spend fifteen to twenty-two million dollars where there's already a competitive market? It's not time.
It's not time, that's not, I mean, that's not even feasible to do that, especially at this time. I agree with everything you say.
And basically in Jasper, it's all people on fixed income. Have they considered that? You know, the Bible said, count the cost. And that's why I want to be here, so I can ask that question.
I can answer that question for you. Have they considered that? Did you see any of them there?
No.
And when that motion was made, there wasn't a discussion. It wasn't addressed, there wasn't a discussion. Anderson made, he made the motion, but there was no discussion. It was just, okay, no. And they moved on.
And that was it.
And that's how much time they spent on that issue.
There was no, he's absolutely correct.
We're rushing this through, but we couldn't take time to even have a discussion to give relief to these people.
Well, I agree, we shouldn't rush this through either. But the difference in a municipal internet provider.
Let's discuss that light bill and people go there. Let's discuss the light bill and.
Well, this is basically what the broad.
I know, but if you want me to have that discussion, discuss the utilities first and then I have that discussion with you.
That, that's.
We have.
We can have.
And that's my point, there's a bigger discussion than you can make.
We can't do that. We can't do that, and I understand where you're coming from, and you're absolutely right, there is a bigger discussion.
And with that being said, I would, another agenda.
I understand, I know you do. Go ahead. Yes, ma'am. Sure, go ahead.
I just want to say this. All I'm gonna say is, when we had the pandemic, I called the city and I said, and I realized this is supposed to be about broadband right now. But I called the city and I said, what are y'all gonna do? We had to shut our shop down two months, no customers. I am not a have-to-have business, I'm a pleasure business, I own junk tea. Did you get that, Steve? Anyhow, they said, we're not gonna cut your lights off. And we're not going to charge you a light fee. I said, but I have no money coming in. And she said, well, you'll just have to pay it. Well, of course, we had to go ahead and pay it and it come out of our pocket and out of my overhead and stuff. They don't care about us, they don't. I've talked to them several times about what they can do to help. I cannot vote on this because I don't live in the city.
But your business is, and I've come by there several times.
And every decision they make affects my business. And I'm telling y'all, if gas goes up this summer, I've been blessed on that business sixteen years. But if gas goes up, I'm gonna be the first one that people, they're not gonna make a demand to come see me. But I still, I have a thirteen hundred dollar light bill to pay this month. So I'm just, that's my two cents for whatever it's worth.
Thank you, Teresa, I appreciate that.
I'm gonna go.
Thank you for coming, we appreciate that.
I gotta take Miss Evelyn back over.
Okay, all right. I just want to let everybody know, I appreciate you showing up. And I don't appreciate my fellow councilmembers not showing up. So like I said.
You should get me taken back over there.
We have March fourteenth coming up, that's city councils, that's city councilings, so. They can't say like, well, you know, this is not on it, you can't say this, yes, you can, you come in, you, that piece of paper at the back, you sign up. Say what you gotta say, they can't tell you no.
But don't expect an answer.
Don't expect an answer.
They can't answer your question.
Right, they can't answer.
If, if it's car, they can say anything you want.
Lord, yeah, I think you're doing a good job, this young man here.